So the first item under my report, three items tonight, we'll start off with, I'll turn it over to Mr. Stoy to present on the Washington DC trip for our sophomore class. And I believe they all have copies of it.
I do have extra copies if you need them. My name's Chris Stoyman, sophomore class advisor. It's been a couple of years since we were able to run this sophomore field trip. And this year we're going to try and run it again. It's scheduled for Friday at 28. It's open to all 10th graders and we're hoping to go to Washington DC. Just to give you a quick rundown, we needed a school, we leave the school at about 6:00 AM. We get dropped off at the Capitol Building at about 9:00, 9:30. At that point, we break up into our small groups and each small group has a chaperone. Either a teacher or a parent chaperone, whatever their parents sign on. They get to go visit different, if we see them, these monuments, whatever they want, they go out to eat. We'll meet at the Lincoln Memorial where it's at 5:00, where we get picked up and then go over to Arlington to see a couple of the grave sites and then we'll watch changing of the guard. And at that point, we'll leave Arlington, stop at Thermont, something to eat, there's a Taco Bell. AFC, there is a Brooks School there and we'll ride back to school roughly about 10:30. So that's a rundown of the trip itself. I did get a reservation for three charter buses. And we had, the list that I got was 130 students for 10th grade and then I'd like to take about 15 to 20 chaperones. Most of those are going to be parents and probably roughly around four teachers. The cost is, we pay for the cost ourselves, sophomore class. We run fundraisers to lower the cost and then whatever we don't, then have to charge per student. As of right now, without any fundraisers and if all the students go, the price would be about $50 per person. With a fundraiser, we can bring that price down and then each individual student will have the opportunity to do their own personal fundraiser to lower their cost. So if they wanted to, they could raise the $50 and $5.5 and essentially pay for the trip. The only cost, the school board or the school district would be to pay for the teachers, the chaperones that are, sorry, the subsidies covering for the teachers would be really only the cost of the trip. It's, we've done it before, I don't know how long, it's probably going to be my 12th, 13th time going. I've been running it for about seven years, for the last couple we had a few years ago. Mr. Heck's been on it before, it's a well-run trip, the kids like it. We usually have pretty close to 90 to 95% of the students go, so it's one of the bigger field trips the students go on. But other than that, do you have any questions? The chaperones would have to have their clearance, obviously, Mike also started taking care of that now so they can, you know, get okay with that.
So fun fact about Thermont, if you look up on top of the mountain from Thermont there and you see a big pine tree, or it looks to be a pine tree, it's taller than all the others. It's actually an arch tower for the campus.
Oh yeah?
I think it's, whatever campus right there.
Yeah, we can't see it.
Yeah.
Interesting. Any questions, don't you know, for the last, thank you.
The next item I have is just to give you an update of where we stand on junior, senior high school renovation project. We met with Chris, Dennis, myself and Nev, met with Fidavia, our construction management firm, the director of construction and another one of their supervisors to review a little bit of where we're at. What are some options that we could do as far as exchanging out different finishes? Instead of things like relocating the library to the center of the building if we kept the library the same? If we shifted to just one tower and enlarged that tower instead of two towers? What are the, you know, could we put classrooms within the courtyards to alleviate us sprawling out further? So we met last week with them and then they have put together kind of a tentative, you know, overview of what we all talked about and then they will go back to Crabtree and I believe they're meeting with Crabtree in two weeks. They're supposed to kind of give Crabtree some direction as to based on those conversations. So we're move, we're trying to move the project forward. What we're trying to do is also bring that, the cost of that building within line of where our budget, if not a little lower than it. We also want to try to advance this project as quick as possible so that we can be out sometime this spring for bid again and take a look at it. So they kind of have their marching orders, they will move on to, to meet with Jeff, our architect and then draw up some, some plans as to what that would look like and where we could meet. And then the, oh, the option or the other thing I have is the idea of a school safety and security coordinator. So by state code, we have to have somebody earmarked to be that position. And that position is, has been Mike for quite some time. Mike has kind of filled in and done it, but I think that position continues to grow and it continues to exceed, you know, just as a tack-on position. And so we got a grant or we, the state earmarked $120,000 for safety and security, $120,000 for mental health in this last budget. You have to write a grant in order to receive it, it's guaranteed money, but you have to go through the hoops, if you will, to do that. What we're proposing is that we bring on a coordinator of school safety and security that would act as, that would help us with drills, would help us with hardening, security, be in our buildings on a consistent basis and just be a presence, making connections with kids. You know, sitting in the cafeteria, talking with them and understanding where kids are. It kind of blurs the lines a little bit with mental health in the respects of as they're making those relations and connections, having those conversations with our kids, finding out what's going on so that we can continue to make our schools a better place. We have the relationship with the Topahawk and police, we have police in our buildings around 10 hours a week. Scheduled throughout, we've had Bethel that has come through our buildings as well. Burnville periodically comes through PB. We just did all of our intruder drills and the police were part of that, the state police were part of that and they give us a lot. But we continue, want to make sure that we are always looking to be better and do better when it comes to the safety and security of our, of our kids. So you have attached to the packet here is the job description for what that would look like, how the grant would fund it, it would be a combination of district funds versus grant funding. You see the, the first two years, it's a, it's a 26-month grant, right, 29-month grant. It would cover the salaries essentially and some of the benefits. And then the district would have to fund, assuming that the person that we find requires the benefits, that would kind of be the, the max cost to the district, assuming that they would need family benefits. It could be single, it could be couple, it could be neither. The one piece to this is whether this person, and this is really, the question for the board is, you know, is this something we want to pursue and should this position be somebody that's armed in the building?
Obviously, yes.
There, there is a lot of hoops to jump through. So right now, the state recognizes three areas. One is a school resource officer, one is school police officer and one is armed security guard. The school resource officer is connected to another organization or institution. So, you know, typically when school resources come in, you contract with the local police department or you contract with the state police and they provide an SRO for a set timeframe for a set period of days, et cetera. We used to do that with the state police many years ago. The next piece is to have our own police force. The unique thing about the, the police force is that they are, for all intensive purposes, our police. They have the ability to arrest, they have the ability to find, they have the ability to, you know, handcuff, et cetera. And then there's the armed security personnel, which is, they're not police. They just have the ability to, to carry a weapon. The ideal situation would be to find a, a retired police officer that's interested in something like this. That's still, you know, if they're within their retirement period, they still have the ability to carry firearms. But there are a lot of hoops to jump through. It's not impossible, it's something that we can get them, but there are trainings and there are forms that need to be filled out to do that. The process, what I'd like to do is I'd like to start the process and get the person on board and bring them in and in that initial process is start reviewing our drills, all our safety plans, all of our security measures. At the same time concurrently pursue the armed piece. Because the timeframe will not allow us to, it won't be something day one that this person can be immediately armed. It would be something we would have to work through. The other piece is, I would also like to look at getting a, a vehicle for this person too. And I, and I don't, it doesn't have to be a brand-new vehicle. You know, in talking to some of the other districts, they pursued one on municipal or gov deals and purchased an older police cruiser and then, you know, decalled it out, you know, as campus security or school police or whatever fits that role. But I think, given where we are in the world and kind of where things are, I think this position would help really build up and help solidify a lot of our security.
Does it have to be full-time?
What's that?
Does it have to be full-time?
Um, it, I would think you'd want somebody in the, my hope is that there, this person would be a presence in the buildings all the time. So I think the only way to do that would be to be full-time.
So we need a whole position just for this. It seems, by the state's requirement and then they're giving grants for it, plus whatever we have to kick in. It seems like a whole, it is sad that, are we actually to this point that we have to have someone in here all the time to, I realize that this is when Mr. Leester was coordinating it. And as government it is, they keep having more requirements on it, it's harder and harder to keep up with. I bet, it just seems like I have a lot, tired of a full-time person and a car for this one area.
So the, the actual, the school safety and security coordinator is, that is a title, it's kind of like, they also, you have to have a pandemic coordinator. There, there are personnel with that title. Mike has been our person for the last couple of years. Mike runs the drills at the high school level, assists with the elementary level, but a lot of that goes to the elementary principals to then run their drills. What we've noticed is, as we've worked through this, is some of our, you know, we have drills in place, but to me, this one position would help solidify and bring them all uniform, work through everything. You know, when we're one district, we still have differing procedures for some things. And, and this kind of would help bring that together. Do you have to have a position by state law? You have to have somebody with that title, Mike happens to be, that's the requirement for the state. Does it have to be a whole separate position? It doesn't.
So what all kinds of drills you talk, there's fire, there's active safety, active shooter drills.
Yep.
That's two drills that I can do.
We're required to do weather drills, so that, I mean, that, that's a piece of it. Drills as far as, you know, those are things that were mandated on a monthly bus that we have to do. We also, we try to then do it, you know, during faculty meetings, different types of tabletop drills or some kinds of, you know, prior to the kids actually being part of those drills, run those with teachers. You know, working with this position would be the training aspect as well. We have in-service days, what does that look like as far as safety and security? Like, what do those drills look like? So that's a portion of it, the other portion is having that person as a presence in the building.
You talking about just the high school or you talking about all three?
All three buildings, yeah.
But just one person?
One person. That would rotate. So in addition to, in addition to Topahawk and township's presence in the buildings, you know, we continue their hours. We would have this position also, so, you know, there would be times where our buildings would be doubly covered. This person would circulate the district. You know, it wouldn't be a set schedule, so to speak, they would be randomly throughout the buildings.
And you thought to get one for each building instead of having one to cover three?
So my thought was to start here and see, you know, is that something at some point that we need to branch out and then at that point, it may become where this person transitions to like the chief of police or so to speak of Topahawk and school district and then we have armed officers. Exeter, I was talking to Exeter today, they, they added this position, they did it at an administrative level. I'm suggesting it be at a support staff level. They, they're heading down the path where they want to do police in a couple of years, but they want to start somewhere, they want to harden their security first, get the drills down, get things needed, have that person build relationships. What they did is they have a, they hired a retired sheriff's deputy who has that law for, law enforcement background to bring on.
Would this person attend sporting events and stuff also? Will they have any split schedule where they could?
We could do that. You know, like different, like when we know there's going to be a big, you know, event or a district gang, there could be some coordination in that respect still.
So if you hired somebody to like oversee a security position, I don't know how it rules the schools and staff, but could you actually delegate certain staff members to be acting as your armed? Like can you armed staff and have somebody that would help monitor the training and, you know, rather than say like you're going to have one for each building, you have one person who's in control of training and, you know, doing drills, all that monitoring, but then also if we would just have like two staff at Burnville, two staff at Bethel, that would be concealed carry, you know, in the building all the time. I think you get a better benefit of that. I mean, if you're out in plain sight, yes, you might deter, but I mean, yeah.
So the, the law does not permit anybody but a security personnel to carry. So he can't arm teachers, you were not allowed to have, it's not, some states would allow you to have like a gun box where you lock it and certain people. The state of Pennsylvania, remember a couple of years ago, Top, or, oh, Tamaka passed a policy that allowed for arming of teachers. The state quickly reacted and they passed legislation that did not allow any teacher or non-security official. Within that law, that's where they created three series, because there was some loopholes that allowed for the superintendent to be armed. But they closed some of that to only allow school police, SROs or armed security guards. So a lot of what it is, is the, the policy says that, or the code says that the gun has to be purchased and owned by the, the school district. There's certain trainings, we would have to make sure that we have liability, so we would have to add on another policy to cover that liability of having an armed person. And we would have to have policies that govern the use of the gun or when it can be, you know, discharged and, so there's some legwork on that, but I didn't want to go all the way down that route if that's not the direction we want to go or the grant itself is a security and safety grant. We can write the grant for whatever we want. This is something we looked at as, you know, we might have a unique opportunity to bring somebody on board and, you know, at least for the first two years, bring that, that person on. And after two years, if we say, hey, you know, we need to go this direction or that direction, it gives us some flexibility. But it allows us to try this position out without even fully funding, you know, with district funds.
The funding, the $124,000 for both years or for one year?
Yeah, it's combined both years. So that's where, you know, we can pull the salary from the grant and it would cover some of the, you know, benefits. And then roughly, you're looking at about $40,000 each year with health insurances and other, you know, social security. But those would be kind of the max. If it's somebody that, you know, doesn't need the family, you know, if you're looking at a retired, you know, deputy sheriff, chances are, you know, they're retired and they don't have kids in the house. So now it may be, you know, a couple or it may be single or, you know, maybe they don't need the benefits. So then that brings that significantly down.
Two comments, one towards Matt and Carl there. What does it look like for the security person to have some dual roles? Where they'd be a security end janitor or a security end cafeteria worker? And that's probably Brian Boland's question, but, you know, could there be dual roles where somebody is working under the quote-unquote SRO, chief of our police, something like that? Will they have a dual role or, you know, I don't know if that's possible.
Or it's a different job or something, not to, they have to leave them, you know?
They're in the building is what I'm saying, it gives them the building presence per se. Potential, just, just an idea.
So Blue Mountain does that. They have, several years ago, they, they sent their head of facilities and their assistant head of facilities to training to become armed police officers. So when you go to an event, they transition out of that head facilities role or that directorate and then they're armed and they carry a utility belt and everything. So that is, but they, they, there's certain trainings that we would have to go through. So whatever trainings this person would have to go through, so too would that person. You know, that's one of those things where, you know, ironically, you know, there's probably a majority of our people in the buildings know how to operate and use a gun. They do it on a regular basis with hunting. But, you know, I don't know that, you know, if you have, if you earmark, I, I don't know that I would want as a custodian to be making, you know, $15 an hour and then charged with security. Because I don't know that, like, I don't know that I would want to take that liability on for $15 an hour, if that makes sense.
Which is a thought.
Yeah, and they do.
How to get around, how to get around.
Yep.
My other, second part of my comment to this position is, I think for the first two years at least, it gives us an added benefit of having that relationship of law enforcement with our students. I personally got to see when Topahawk and Township was, their, the retired police chief was, was still here and the relationships that he built with our students and the rapport he had with them. If you have somebody with that type of character or ability to build a relationship, I think it would just help our students tremendously with the respect. When they have that respect in law enforcement, I think it goes a long ways at them sporting events and all that to tie together. I think it's a great idea. That $40,000 cost does scare me a little bit. That's a lot, if a person were to take all our benefits and stuff, we need that. But at the same time, I look at how we could put a price tag on student safety and basically, you can't.
Guarantee as a school district, we wasted $40,000 on a lot worse.
Absolutely, yeah.
Things than this.
I, I, I concur. I would, I guess what I was trying to say is when the state's saying they have a grant, I was hoping it would have covered more of that cost.
So what happens in two years from now? Will we decide to go a different direction and what happens to that? Are we locked into that or is that?
I can't see us having to. We, we would eliminate the position.
I don't see that, I don't see the world changing in two years.
I, I don't either and, but, and, and maybe, hey, maybe we get our feet in here and it's totally not what we look at, what we like and we would want to, but I think you get the right person that has a good ability to build relationships with our students, with our staff, with our community. I think it's just everybody involved.
If you have the right person, every two years, we might not, we might not need to contract to Topahawk and State.
That could be true too.
So that would be offset some of our costs going forward. I mean, it's, and to me, it's almost a little bit of a road show, they don't know how it's going to work, so I would just stick with Topahawk and State.
The, the only thing I will say is, one of the added benefits with Topahawk and Township is, there was an incident at the soccer game this past Saturday. And having that relationship, Mr. Johnson simply called to Chief Ryan. Ryan happened to be, he also runs with Bethel and we had both Topahawk and Township and Bethel right here, where we would have had to worry about state police territory. So there is, there is that benefit to.
If you had this person, would they have control of that situation? Would you be able to take control of that situation?
Not unless we, not unless they were a full-fledged school police.
But they would be able to, as a armed security, they would already, or, I, I, my hope would be they would be continuing that rapport with our Bethel Township, with our Topahawk and Township, with our Burnville and with PSP and, and coordinating all that safety and stuff together, how we respond and keeping that rest of, hey, we have a county soccer meeting here tonight type thing or, or whatever that case may be.
So the, the, the deal that we have with Topahawk and Township, it's an intergovernmental agreement. So it allows Topahawk and Township to patrol our facilities and that's what generates their jurisdiction on our property. The minute we cut that agreement, they and Bethel would not respond. It would be state police and then they would back up state police if they needed it.
Should we keep that agreement in place for an hour of coverage a week just to have?
I don't know.
Like, is there a minimum of what you need to be able to? You know, what, what do you need?
I, I would leave it to the person.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. And who knows, maybe we create this position and we don't get any applicants to suit the bill?
Well, and both of you are saying, which I completely agree, the right person. I, I don't think we should rush, well, we found somebody that fits the criteria, good, let's hire him. I'm sorry, Mr. Leester for now is the right person. He builds bridges for kids, they trust him, they're willing to speak to him. We need that kind of person that the kids feel safe with to say, hey, I, in the bathroom, I overheard, this is going to happen. And it, that's not just anybody.
Oh, I totally concur.
That's definitely a relational thing.
Um, do you know, offhand, it's, it's right around 20,000, if that makes sense, will we spend for Topahawk and security? So with Township too? It's a little less than, I think a one-year limit is 17, I don't know.
Yeah, it was 13, I don't know, 15 and now it's a little over 20.
Hey, can you go over what, what is the criteria to spend this course?
It can be spent on any aspect of security.
So what if, I got a Bethel and Topahawk and where they're at as far as labor, but would it be worth sitting down and talking to them if they're on a fence of maybe adding another police force officer but can't quite justify, could we use that to say, hey, look, we could cover half the salary and you get them to help write, do the drills? Like, they're more in the building with us than they would be technically with them, but like, when their school's not in or they need weekend work, I think it's still picking up. Could you do more of our relations, use that money to push more of a relationship with our current police force?
I would think you could do that if you chose to go that route. And if they're, if they'd be interested. And it's kind of that's a question that we have to take back to the administration. My, this is my perspective, but take back to our administration and say, hey, are they building them relationships now? Or has that changed? Do you know what I mean? As, as retirees happen, is it the same or is it different? I don't know that answer.
I just listened to like our talk of how much we like Topahawk and Bethel. You know, I don't want to say why it's a good thing if it's not broken, but yeah, can we push that funding somewhere to get them maybe more in our building or?
So I, I can tell you, the relationship, it's, it's a great relationship with Topahawk and I wouldn't bash that. I would say it's different since Chief Kershner has retired. You know, I, I think Brian's a great chief and I think he's a great guy. I just think, you know, chief was much more on Brian's, I don't, and I don't want to. you know, chief was much more on Brian's, I don't, and I don't want to, kind of want to say, because I don't want it to sound like I'm insulting Brian, because I'm not, because I absolutely love Brian. I just, yeah, I think, you know, chief was a lot on the relationship side, like, I can tell you, you know, when Brian comes in our buildings, he's a, he's a police force, head of presence. Chris, when he was in the buildings, it was a lot more interaction on a personal level than police force, if that makes sense. Is that a good way to, to describe it? You know, Brian comes in and he, you know, comes into the cafeterias where the guys do, Chris would sit down and eat lunch with the guys, with the kids. But, you know, Chris has, you know, he was in the force for twenty-five years in this area, and, you know, had those relationships in a different, you know, level, so I'm not saying one is right over the other. In my mind, somebody who has that, you know, personality, idea of Chris, or like a retired, you know, deputy chief that has that personality like Chris, I think is perfect for something like this. I don't know that, I think we're looking for somebody to be a status, to be in the building, that knows the building, knows people, makes those relationships, and is a deterrent. But in this position, I'm, I'm pitching it more as it's not a police officer. I don't want somebody, I want somebody to be a presence, but I don't want them standing in the hallways with their arms folded, doing nothing, either just standing there. I want them interacting with kids, so that they can have those relationships, and a lot of, a lot of the intelligence, if you will, comes from those relationships and conversations, and that's how we're able to prevent things.
Should we call Mr. Kershner and see how retirement's going? What hurt, what folk all up to? What we're looking at?
Is it something to pursue?
Yes. I like to see, along with pursuit, I like to see the total cost for the whole kind of car, gun, insurance, the total cost of that.
Someone just told me, one of our police departments locally was upgrading cars. Did you hear that?
Yeah. Brian was just telling me that. And that's ideally what I'm looking for, I'm not looking for a forty thousand dollar Explorer all, you know, light it out and everything, I'm looking for.
Eight thousand dollars.
Right, something like that, Escalade. I mean, we're not talking super tentative.
If you were on municipal bids, or gub deals, you could find cop cars for, yeah, cheap, cheap. Yeah, three thousand, four thousand, five thousand bucks.
Well, and when I, and when I talked to, when I talked to Exra, that's ultimately what, they were looking to do the same thing. They were looking on municipal bids and stuff, and they said, you know, they're, they're trying to find something local, so that they know that the, that the department hasn't beat it, that it's been maintained, and, you know, and I know, like, you know, if Topahakin's getting rid of vehicles, like, those vehicles are so, you know, Matt Lath does them, and, you know, I know there's, there's a lot of care taken, you know, I'm not sure so much on, you know, Bethel, I'm sure it's probably very similar, or Burnville, like, when they upgrade their vehicles. To me, that's, you know, something we'd be looking for, somebody local that's getting rid of something, that's not a huge cost to it, but.
Well, this is Topahakin, it sounds cheaper.
Just mark her out with police.
Peter's team. Yeah, but, yeah, there we go. All right, that ends my reflect.
I struggle a little bit with it, because I'm really at this stage.
I know, I hear you.
Whatever the cost is, is, I mean, if I go back to school, we didn't, we didn't have anything. And we had, you know, pent, pent, many state police combination and stuff a little bit. And they didn't want to do it no more, so we went with Topahakin, and they're doing a good job and all that, and it's like, I just struggle that we're at that next level for, and again, I know they need to pay anything happen, and I get that, is it really at that level that we have to put armed people in our buildings to protect everybody's safety? Or are we at that spot? And then we could argue that if we're going to do it, and we put a person at the high school, now something happens at Bethel. So where do you, if you want to, if you want to make it one hundred percent fail proof, you would almost have to put a full-time person from whatever time we open till one we close, and the last person who still leaves every day in every building. So are we at that spot? And that's where I struggle sometimes, are we really at that spot that, that, I just, I struggle with that. I don't, if we do it, of course I want the person to be armed, but I just struggle with that spot, that even with getting police presence in to try to deter anything, that we need to go to the next level. That, that, that's my two cents for what it's worth.
So when Mike retires, right, do we have another person in mind if we wouldn't go this route?
Yes. Here we go. That's why he's covering, he's covering for lethal weapons. Do you permit for this?
I don't know.
Either that or a rap.
Any other comments on that?
All right, we're going to move on. Citizens or students wishing to address the board pertaining to agenda items. Seeing none, we'll move on to buildings and grounds.
All right. And, uh, we did have a building, we reached out to a couple people, plenty of people at the meeting, but this is what come out of it.
John Deere, I'm a trucker.
Yeah. So Heston and I visited, uh, John Deere, Deer Country in Allentown, to look at the different types of tractors. There's a big difference between the I tractor and the, and the, the five thousand series, which is the I series, and the four thousand series, which is more of the, I guess, subcompact residential. The, my impression of the five thousand, it was just, it was overwhelming to sit in it, it was, there's so many, so many buttons and lap rivers and, and things like that, it was just, it was just mind-blowing. It was huge, and it was, it was really big. I don't know if we'd fit it in our, in our garage, to be honest with you. So, and there's some, some board members would like to go down around the five thousand series, because there are benefits to it, and I'm not exactly sure what they are, but I'm talking to Heston and the guys that actually may be driving it, they feel more comfortable with the, with the four thousand series, because it's a, it's, it's more user-friendly, less, it's smaller, and less bells and whistles on it. But, I, you know, I don't know, I did talk to Matt about this, because he has an issue with that, but I, we brought it to the, to the Buildings and Grounds Committee, and that was a recommendation, so I don't know if you want to discuss that.
Ultimately, it was whatever they wanted, we were just, when this was brought up way back, at that time, a bigger tractor was actually quite a few thousand dollars cheaper, and you were getting more heavy duty for, as he was asking for snow removal, pushing back different things. So it wasn't so much I wanted them to have it, I just.
Yeah, I, I, it makes sense, if you get a bigger machine for the same price, really, really.
And given the issue that he was having with the smaller one, four-wheel drive being broke, yeah, what was it, twelve hundred hours or something?
Eight hundred.
Low-hour machine, you know.
Two to seven hours.
Right, just not, you know, what is the voice of?
There's a horsepower.
Twenty-three horsepower.
Well, and the, the one that was the equal cost of the forty sixty-six R was the five thousand series, but it was the E series. And they had told us, well, they had told, they told you and Heston that he would not sell the E series to us, that it wouldn't be, so to go to the M series jumped us up twenty-five thousand or something like that.
So, with the four thousand series, all the same equipment we have tend to use these. Heston suggested we get a plow box for it, as mature, if that's necessary.
Did we say a plow box? You're talking snow block?
Yeah.
And where's going that round?
Well, he, he has it on there as a possible addition, but we don't need to do that.
I was really talking about, you know, the plow, we wanted the heavier, super.
Yeah.
Right.
The two fifties on there for extra snow, right? Isn't that how we discussed that? So that's.
Yeah, because if you're going with the lighter tractor, and we can still remove with it, we're going to be at the same place in, I don't know how many years, but the other one lasted us, but.
That's not supposed to happen.
Exactly.
That's why we're going with the smaller one. No snow removal, no pushing big snow piles, we get a tractor.
This is for mowing, cultivating, or airing, and all that kind of stuff.
Nice, and Heston said, if it's that significant of snow, we go as long as a red, I'll be going.
Yes, exactly. So you got the mowers deck right down, right?
Right.
Maybe more lawn cover, I'm sure.
So, and, so that was discussed, was the replacement, and then you have in your, or you have in your packet the mowing deck and rough-cut deck, which was about sixty-five hundred for both of them.
And a lot of that had to do with moving, uh, across country, rough country.
And then also the finish mower they could use with additional mowers, for a second operator.
And then mowers, the by-rear, right, they're sixty, so that's five foot and six foot.
One of them is seventy-two inch.
Yeah.
You know, six. Well, you better be careful on the sixty-inch, because your tractor's wider than sixty inches. Am I right, Mike?
No, it would make sure. It would be pretty darn close.
Yeah, so I would definitely make sure of that, because next thing you'll be driving down when you're trying to mow, and I think that works as well.
So then my next question would be, if we're going to use this tractor for snow removal, then we don't get a cab on it? Now we go back to a tractor without a cab and save a few bucks.
So the, the purpose for the cab, so we, we went back and forth on the cab, and then the discussion was, before we started moving this and prepping this document, I went back to us and I said, tell the trucker your price, to make sure that the cab is not a critical piece. And that's where the discussion was had, is if we're going to use it as a mowing, if we're going to mow with it, then it would make sense to do the, the cab. If we're going to spend the hours on it, then it makes sense to, to put the, I guess, the air conditioning in, plus if you're going to put the, if they're going to be using it during the winter for different things, I would think it makes us a little more optimal to be in a little bit more of an environment than outside pushing stuff. I mean, I would still think, we probably, you know, if there's a need to push snow back or something, you know, it might be utilized here and there, but I'm hoping that we, the whole point of putting the mowing decks on there is to try to keep that machine running a lot more than just a couple hours, you know, here and there like we have. I don't, Tom, do you also want to talk about the conversation that you had with Cliff this afternoon?
We just got the John Deere back from Elmer Zerman.
Yeah.
And, uh, Elmer, I think, we were waiting for his final decision, because we were ripping apart and seeing what, he said it is fixable, and it is, it's not going to be ten thousand dollars, it's probably the around five thousand dollar mark of those. That's, that's what Cliff told me. Now, I, that was a five block, I didn't get a chance, I would have called Elmer, if anybody knows Elmer, maybe they should. Potrell.
So you got it, remember?
If Pot comes to you, he says, you know.
I'm going to go down the road, radical on this, but at the time when Nelson Harding was contacted, was Elmer Zerman not contacted the first time for Heston?
Correct.
Because his number was passed on as the first choice of who to call after.
Elmer was just, Elmer, it was taken to Elmer.
And I would like, maybe we talked about this.
Two weeks or a week before our last looking for.
And I passed numbers along, that was supposed to be the first phone call, because I had talked to him, and he said he'd be willing, and I was told that he wouldn't look at it, and then he called the Nelson Harding, and then obviously that ended, but, you know, I don't know.
Now, initially, what was told to us is, it's about five thousand, I think I put this in the notes somewhere, it was like five thousand, open it up, and then once we got into it, it's going to be more.
Where did them, and again, we are going down the road, where did them numbers come?
What I just, with the.
Yeah.
Open it up and then going further, Heston done that to us when we met with him.
Where, where did he get that?
Elmer, that's, that's what Heston, how, Heston's conversation at some point was with Elmer. Now, I don't know, like, I didn't, Tom and I weren't part of this conversation, so I don't know, but it sounded like, once he got into the engine, there was going to be, you know, just to get, just to start cracking it open was five thousand, and then get into the engine, there was about another five thousand dollars worth of repairs.
I think somebody wanted new John Deere tractor.
Agreed.
I'd say they can fix it, but it's.
Now, the other, I mean, I'm not advocating that we spend forty-three thousand on our fifth, I guess fifty-three thousand. I don't know, is it, does it, if we got it fixed, does that net a better price on resale?
I doubt it. You know, I, I just said, you know, we should just fix it and keep it, was my initial thought, but, you know, we have, you know, Chris, you jump in, correct, we want to, if we're wrong here, we have a case tractor that we do not use currently, because no one likes it. It's, the only reason it's not being used. Nothing wrong with it, they just don't like it, so they don't use it. So we would be looking to move that along through gub deals or municipal bids, and we will, and we would put this John Deere on gub deals, municipal bids. My beliefs are, now is probably the strongest time in history to sell used equipment. The one that may kill us is interest rate going up, you know, but generally some deal on there is cash anyway. I would think, between the two of them, sales, now is the best time to do it, to offset that cost of that new machine.
The issue with the machine is, is more of horsepower than it is, you know, the fact that it's older, or, it just doesn't have the horsepower to run.
That's the first time I've hearing that, though. We've never complained that it's slow.
I heard, I heard, I heard him last week, two weeks ago. He said, it pulls the aerator, but it struggles. It's, it's, he, he just aerated today, and he showed me a video of how it worked, and it was pulling it, it was flat. If it goes uphill, that's where it struggles. So, I don't know how, if we get it completely fixed, will, will it be okay? I don't know.
So, so, we understand, so it's simple here on these new ones, this sixty-six series is sixty-six engine horsepower, translated to probably about forty PTO, which is what we're going from thirty-four, no, I think it's thirty-four horsepower, thirty-four, thirty-six to what we have now.
So, right now we have thirty, if this is correct, thirty-two horsepower, the engine and PTO is twenty-three.
Yeah, so your, your power to pull that aerator.
You're saying we're only going to aim about ten to fifteen horsepower, is that? Do you have gears to gear down, you don't got to try and go uphill in high gear, as an aerator doesn't have to go thirty miles an hour to do its job. So you gear down and pull the hill, or do anything else, that, you're going to stay in high gear, and engine's going to bog down.
The other issue with the old one is, Heston reported that there was a lobble on the PTO, and it was sheared pins on whatever they were hoping to have to, so the.
That's what I think.
There's other issues.
That's going to get fixed.
Right, so, I mean, there's, there's multiple things to fix, it's just going to get fixed.
And that could be a bearing impact, too.
Could be, or could be a bad, could be anything, if I take it apart. Could be, or could be a bad, could be anything, if I take it apart.
So do we have estimated values to share with the whole team, of what stuff we're selling for?
Yeah, so I think you guys got that, so roughly.
Was it listed in there?
So currently, the forty-three hundred stuff were on Gov deals, I believe, or online. Probably the one that was the closest was a ninety-nine and twenty-five, we have, ours has two thousand fifty-one hours on it. A ninety-nine, a ninety-nine at twenty-five hundred hours was selling for thirteen thousand. You know, you have a two thousand, and ours is a twenty-one, a two thousand one. A two thousand with fifteen hundred hours, now this includes the backhoe, was selling for twenty-two nine. A two thousand one that had twelve hundred hours on it was twenty-one five with backhoe, tractor with fifteen hundred hours was thirteen thousand. So, you know, we're somewhere in that neighborhood of, I would think about thirteen thousand. The case, we're two thousand ten with five hundred and forty hours. A two thousand fifteen with seven hundred and twenty-four hours was from nineteen thousand nine hundred, and a two thousand eleven with two hundred ninety-five hours was eighteen thousand nine hundred. So we're assuming somewhere in the neighborhood of, you know, about thirty-two thousand dollars we would get by selling these tractors, which would again bring the cost down. You know, to somewhere about twenty thousand for the new tractor.
I wanna back this conversation one more time, because this whole thing about the horsepower, and this tractor nothing you can do, or need to do, just makes me completely stopping my tracks now. Cause I was thinking we were gonna spend, if we fixed the old tractor, it would probably be ten, twelve, fifteen thousand dollars, and I thought at that particular time, just get rid of the old tractor and not fix it. If we're gonna replace it with a similar model, just a few horsepower more, as we just discussed. We're saying that five extra horsepower or fifteen extra horsepower, maybe enough to fill the aerator.
The horsepower, horsepower for PTO is going from twenty-three to fifty-seven, that's thirty-four more horsepower.
Did you use PTO?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I didn't think, the, not the aerator, the other one, I don't know what's, the end of the A, has the spikes in it, that uses PTO, it won't vibrate, or choose.
Is that the aerator or the?
No, it's not a thing like that, it's not, it's not an aerator, it has spikes, it's a big machine, that, that does use a PTO. So, it's, it's thirty-four additional horsepower, so going from twenty-three to fifty-seven, that's thirty-four more horsepower, one and a half times more than that's gonna. And the, just the engine horsepower, thirty-six.
That was PTO.
That was PTO. The engine horsepower goes thirty-two to sixty-five, that's an increase of thirty-three, thirty-four, oh, not that horsepower.
Heston misunderstood that the first time.
Sorry.
No, no.
She had another building grounds committee, the hatch was out thirty-four.
What if we threw everything here and then?
Yeah, cause we're getting a lot of discussion.
Yeah.
We're building a pickup truck for snow removal, and we're that utilized.
Well, I mean, that, Chris, you wanna?
That kinda came out of us discussing that, we weren't gonna really use this new tractor, really pushing a lot of snow, that's why we're using trucks. And with the additional people we've been adding, and Heston out in a truck all the time for plowing the snow, that kinda justified, kinda justified that often, instead of going to the ag tractor, spending whatever was, it was eighty thousand dollars. Going to the forty-sixty-six, that cost savings would help also help justify the extra pickup truck for the plow. It's about getting another person out plowing, so you don't have to wait till he's done at the high school to head to Berkeley, they're already having a person down there starting.
And you were, and we were just added another full-time building grounds committee person, that has no wheels to go around the distance, currently. So it kinda was a balance between, between everything, and, and they make sense in that current platform.
We're talking about this as a pickup truck, or do you still divide and carry tools in it?
Utility body.
It'd be the same as the others, yeah.
Yeah, just like you have a tool bag.
And, and we don't have pricing on that, because it just, it, the dealership said they just opened, well, they just opened up at the end of last week, online pricing, so. And then ordering is, in about a week or two, seventh of fourteen, is where we've got a window to order, or be able to get pricing, I should say. So, I can't even, you know, the other ones we got were thirty-eight thousand, I think was the last truck we got, I'm sure we will not get a truck for thirty-eight thousand. But I can't, I don't even have pricing on them, to kind of give you an idea of what that is right now.
My other question would be for the buildings and grounds committee is, when you have this meeting, check out what the PTO horsepower required is for a PTO driven, if it is an aerivator, aerodashvator, whatever. See what is required to drive that, to make sure somebody's not, you know, whatever. Because obviously, whether it's bought or it's overrated size for the tractor, it's gonna be, be used on. And then also, you know, like I said, still, if you're not gonna use this tractor, if you decide to get it doing for snow removal, I don't see the cab, they've been, you know, mowing grass without cabs forever, so.
Actually, they haven't been mowing grass with cabs, without cabs forever, and they gave up a cab to go to an open machine, for the last two or three.
So the sunshade.
With the sunshade, yes. And, and my understanding is they regret doing that. I would assume so.
Maybe we should, hold on to this, cause there's, you know, if we talk to Elmer and see what that deal is, that might change everything.
But it's gotta be quick, we're asking days of these calls.
Right.
Yeah, there's, there's something with John Deere pricing going up here near future.
Yes, yes, the new model, your pricing is strong.
So, as, so.
Heston gets to set the date, but I, I remember it was real fast.
Honestly, honestly, I think if we talk to the dealer, we could say, yep, we're, think we're gonna take this tractor, they'll put the order, they want that one. They want us not to take that tractor when it comes, cause then they can sell it.
So, if, if you look at, if you look at the quotes, as long as the quote was created prior to October thirty-first, they would still honor, so you'll see it expires November twenty-fourth. So we're still, we're still good, I mean, the prices increased November first, but as long as a quote was created prior, they would lock us in for that.
So we could have a decision, I mean, we, before the next board meeting, make a decision.
And then I mean, does this Elmer, I actually gave you guys a quote, did he physically look at the tractor, tell us anything?
Yeah, and I asked Cliff, when he, when you picked up, I said, did he give you a bill? Cause I don't know, then he said he's been nails, so I don't.
So did he take it, or he just looked?
No, he just, he just looked at it, I think he, he may have worked on the deal, I don't, I'm not exactly sure, that's why I asked him if there was a bill.
Probably his feet or whatever, however far he dug into it to give us an estimate.
Okay.
That would be my guess. Yeah, we talked about this couple, we were about calling our votes, we should go ahead or not, we're still back.
Let's, let's kinda hit pause on, on this discussion, move through the, through the meeting, circle back to the buildings and grounds team for that. I use that patron word. Or, or turn that back to the buildings and grounds team, to, to discuss that further, to, to hopefully bring us some clarity for the next meeting, that we could vote on something before the twenty-fourth, if that's the direction we still choose. Is everybody, is that where?
Who's making sure all the quotes are good? Yeah, they're all, you're the twenty-fourth, but.
Yeah, we, I made a movie, I had a movie at home. Okay. Is everybody good with that thought? Okay, moving on to finance.
So, let's talk about this year, this current budget year. The twenty-two, twenty-three school year, we had the budgeted, we actually have a bond fund. A bond fund that was one point seven five million dollars more than we're paying currently. So it's, it's budgeted in the, in the area where it would be paid at bond principal and interest. So, we should, we, we know we're not spending that on the bond payment, so that is money that's available to go to capital reserve or the building project. So, and then there's an additional five hundred thousand that's trans, that's budgeted to go to track, uh, capital reserve, for the, our five-year capital projects plan, for roofing and things like that that we. So you got the, the one point seven, uh, five and five hundred thousand, so roughly you got two point, two point two five million to transfer from this budget, current, the year we're in. Based on the way our budget is, so that's, we're looking to do that in December. And then, okay, so that's that, two point two five million dollars. We're also in the middle of the audit for last year, of which we have excess revenue over expenditures of about two point two million dollars, two point two five of it, just, we don't have the final number yet. And we won't know that until, it's probably the end of this month. So we'll be transferring another two point two five from last fiscal year, effective June thirtieth, it'll be part of the, the twenty, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two audit, uh, and financial statements. So we're really putting four point five million dollars into the capital, capital reserve, by the end of this calendar year. But we're looking to do that in a two-step motion to do that. Just give you the heads up, we don't have the final numbers in the audit yet, but that's pretty much what it's gonna be. We currently have four point six million dollars in the capital reserve fund, so really, it would be about doubling it, going back to nine million, roughly. And that would be for the project and the other things that we have to run. And in addition to the money that we have set aside for the, in the committed fund balances of one point two million dollars later. So I'm just giving you heads up on what those numbers are. And I'll give you the solid numbers for the December meeting.
And we currently have about five million in capital reserves, four point six.
Four point, four point six, four point seven.
Does that money make you retire?
Yeah, I think it'd be a great return now, compared to what it has been, I really, the budgeted, our interest income. We haven't invested in a Plex CD, it's kinda like a, a CD that we. We can get at it every Tuesday, if we tell them in Friday, we can get out the money on Tuesday, so it's, it's, it's nicer return, than just a monthly account. So, I'll, I'll, I get you.
Is it all in that?
What's that?
Everything capital reserve.
Everything investments, or?
Yeah, there's all, everything capital reserve invested in that.
Yeah, other four point, yeah, four, four point six is invested in CD, and that we have a hundred and seventy-two thousand, you know, checking, that's what we did right now.
And then.
There was the, the reserve.
Yeah, but, I wanna go back to the buildings and grounds, and in fact, we talked just about Bethel a little bit, the projects, does that separate from the others? And is that, I don't know, may ask, is that quoted for this year, for the budget for this year, cover that stuff?
So this, this stuff, four, five, and six, well, five just came up, but that's what that, that block of five hundred thousand dollars that's in the budget is reserved for capital projects that come up. So, the lighting, the bleachers, the floor, floor refinishing, that would be part of that five hundred thousand that Tom mentioned, that's in the budget, that would be automatically transferred out to capital reserves, and then these things paid out of there. To give you an idea of where, what things we're looking at, we were looking at upgrading lighting, about around seven thousand, seventy-one hundred dollars. Then we're lighting for the gym, swapping out our current fixtures and putting in LEDs. And then doing similar work to what we did at the Bethel, or excuse me, at Penn Burnville, where the bleachers are original, they were not replaced in the renovation at, at Bethel. And replicating the same flooring at Penn Burnville, having it sanded down, redone, repaint it. The bleachers, if, if you're at Penn Burnville, they were on both sides of the gym, Bethel's is only one side, so it's a little bit bigger than just one of the sides, but it's not doing both sides of the gym. So we're looking somewhere around thirty, thirty-five thousand for bleachers, we're in the process of getting quotes for there, with some rough numbers they were given. And floor refinishing is somewhere around nineteen, twenty thousand dollars, and we were, we were on quotes for that. The playground surface, the issue with the playground surface is, it is that poured rubber, like synthetic tur, or synthetic rubber. There's holes in it, it's shrinking. Heston I know has talked to a number of companies, trying to get them out has been a little difficult, so he has been trying to coordinate, getting them to come out, to give us some idea as to what that looks like. A full replacement of that was somewhere around seventy to eighty thousand, is what he had given. You know, I had asked him to kinda give some other possibilities, like if we were to rip that out, and we put rubber mulch or wood chips in there, what would that cost? If you go under the swings, just from the natural swinging, the top layer of the rubber has been, you know, a hole has been put in there. Because of the shrinkage and contraction around the poles, you know, it's kind of pilloing up, and I'm sure there's water penetrating in there as well. If you go to the edge, you'll see there's a significant shrinkage from the bottom, and you can literally just pick that mat right up. So some of the options we were looking at is, what, what, what would full replacement cost, so we knew exactly what that would be, but then what does repair cost? And I think that's, we were waiting on some quotes and some companies to come out, to give us an idea of, to repair a public.
How, how long does that take?
Since the project, so two thousand ten.
Does that recycle materials?
I don't think so, I think it's the same as what we put on our, all other tractors, at least it appears that way.
Yeah.
I have a feeling that, looking at it that day, that there's no one's gonna wanna touch it there. And that something, you'd see they have it replaced or something different down there, it's kinda rough.
And we, and we also, you know, when we.
Sealed somehow, sealed, it's, you know, it needs to get sealed, cause water just can't be in there.
And that's not crazy.
Yep.
And, I mean, at PB, we have the wood chips in, and, and we're at the point where, hopefully, you know, this summer, or really what's happening is, the water is not draining, so the water pools in there. It just, you know, stops those wood chips, and we keep putting more and more on top of it every year, or every couple of years to refresh it. But really, at some point, those wood chips should be removed, we should put drainage back into that playground, and then put new, you know, either rubberized mulch or wood chips back in, whichever way we go. You know, I don't, it's, it is, I think we're the difficulty with repairing that, as Chris said, is it's, it's got a pattern in it. And, you know, there's a green pattern that flows into the blue pattern, and, you know, I don't know what that is even gonna look like, or is there a way you can cut it, so that you can cut sections out that are patching it? I don't know. So those are things that we'll have to look at. And then, we also looked at some masonry, problems that are happening, you know, getting things re-brick pointed, and the mortar, the mortar in between it. What we were looking to do is kind of address it in stages, instead of doing it all in one shot, and doing some massive project, we break it up over a couple of years. Here's what has to get done year one, here's year two, year three, it might give us some more flexibility and some options with how we do that. So, there's pricing that's getting taken on those things, those are more informational items as we go. You know, the lighting might be something, probably the, the stuff that we have, we'll be able to have quotes pretty quickly as number four, the, the gym. But the other stuff will take some time to get some, some quotes to be able to bring back.
We gotta pull this, that we're supposed to come out of the capital reserve for this year, so we know the dollar, a rough dollar.
And use the bleachers for all the, for, which events do they use the bleachers for?
And use bleachers for all the, for, which events do they use the bleachers for?
Good question. When, when, when do you use the bleachers at Bethel?
Rarely during the school day.
So it's very events?
Are there youth basketball games there? So they use, they use Burnville and Bethel ready?
Dollar Junior High use them, gyms as well.
They use the gyms, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll get you that listing out. Stuff.
Tom, you want to go over the CEO and finance yet?
CEO and finance?
Yeah. This is the, uh, the assessment, appeal resolution that Brian had pitched. And, oh, it's, it's, he said the, he did the revision, uh, that changed the dollar amount, the threshold of, of what we're, what we suggested for appeal. If it's more than, uh, five, it's 500,000 or more, uh, change in assessment versus the, uh, market value or the sales price, uh, then we go. Cause he originally had a 150, change to the 500 faced on the board's recommendation. You know, Brian, yeah, Brian's the one who was pitching this because it's, there's a court case out there and it's, it's important that we have something out there, but Andy and I have gone through this, uh, appeals one with, with our different school districts that we work for, and it's just, it's just a losing battle for, for the board. If we have to go and, uh, you know, appeal somebody's taxes, it's gonna be, it's gonna cause a lot of controversy. The, the county assessment board has a job. They, they're the ones who, who set the, the, the assessed values. I mean, we would have to spend money to get appraisals, we'd have to do all that stuff. So I'm not sure, I, I'm not a big fan of this, but Brian says we need it to protect ourselves in case there's one that's, you know, like a warehouse or something like that, that, that appeals or, or change of the assessment, that it, it just, it blows it out of water. 500,000 change would be significant. So I'm, you know, just throw it out there, I'm not a big fan of it, but Brian said we needed, we should hear what that means.
And that's, and you know, Tom, Tom, my experiences, I can tell you, when, when I bought a house several years ago, I was sitting at the table and I kept going through, I was in the district that did the spot assessments. And I kept asking, is this, are you gonna reassess my house? Are you gonna reassess my house? No, you should be good, you should be good, you should be good. And then all of a sudden, I was like, well, you might be in that reassessment piece. But we bought houses based on the fact that it, we weren't going to get assessed, you know? We were putting it where our budget was, and then, you know, we all know people, or I've sat in meetings where people bought a house thinking, here's their budget, and then all of a sudden, the house that was assessed in the 1960s, all of a sudden gets reassessed to modern 2000, you know, 10, and now they're paying taxes that has tripled, you know, their taxes, and that kind of blows the budget. So I think, I think the 500,000 that we set last time makes sense. I don't know, you know, I know, Tom and I were kind of the stumbling block as to why this did not advance the board earlier, because we were not comfortable and had bad experiences. I think if we do move forward, the 5,000 dollars gives us that wiggle room. But this is on the agenda to simply whether or not you wanna, you know, at this point, stop it or we advance it to the voting session. I like Tom saying, we, we've gone, I've talked multiple times about Brian, and Brian has said this is more a safeguard to the district than anything else, but.
I'm still stuck. The, uh, there, there's been some recent real estate options in Lebanon County. There's one, I live close to the School Bowl Valley line, and there was one a mile from me, and these properties are selling at numbers that I can't even fathom. And the two that I can think of would certainly be subject to this. And the ones questionable agricultural property, the other one isn't agricultural property, but I, I don't see it chasing these people down. I don't.
I don't want to be chasing people down.
Well, well, maybe either. The whole purpose is to protect from a warehouse appealing them and.
If that happens, it's, you know, that's something, I think something, probably would have to happen for that, because they, they spent the money on, on, you know, building the warehouse. You can't deny how much they spent. So it's gonna be hard for them to, to go down on that, but.
And there's so much cost to support what they have spent.
You know, times change.
Times, the times, the times do change, yeah, but when, when's the last time anyone in this room saw real estate go down?
Two thousand eight.
Okay, for a period of what, 30 years, right? Do you know what I mean? Not even 30 years.
The land is sits on D.
I mean, you do have, it, should you choose to pass it, um, you do, in that number seven, it says the school board shall authorize by resolution all appeals beyond the Burke's County Board of Assessment Appeals. So if you remember the last time, it was that this resolution would give authorization for Tom's office to start that process, but before we move to actually any challenges, the appeals would rest with the board. So that is in there.
Should we change the dollar amount down the road? I mean, like, if two years we don't think that 500,000 is enough, could we change it again?
I think we can change anything.
Yeah.
So I think, I think one of the things Tom, or Brian had mentioned is going beyond the 500,000 at this point would be, because then you're, you're specifically targeting a specific type of real estate.
Right down the road, you know, things aren't crazy, we can change it.
I wouldn't think it, I'm not concerned.
I'm not concerned about the people sitting here now. I'm concerned about the board sitting here in the future going after people. That's what I'm concerned about. I mean, who knows what, who we get on the board down the road and what fatalities. I mean, this board is not gonna go after taxpayers or homeowners or small businesses. We might have a board down the road that will. That's what my concern is, we gotta protect, protect our citizens.
I mean, it's by board resolution, so if I had a opinion, Brian should be sitting here telling us how we structure something, we make sure that doesn't happen in the future. Instead of drafting crap like this at the last minute and throwing it in front of us. That, that's one of my big issues with, with the man. Come up with this stuff, but he doesn't come up with the stuff that aligns what I would say with the mindset and philosophy of the current board. Do you mean like to safeguard so that future boards can't do that, or?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think the issue would be, unfortunately, they could unwind or rewind, um, anything that, that we, we set in place. You know, I mean, we can set it place, they, they, the majority said they didn't like what we did. They changed it. I mean, that's just the way it works. I would think in our area, somebody with that mindset would have a tough time sitting in any elected office in this general area to become the majority, you know, with the times indeed. I mean, most, the districts that we watch, watch the news.
I know.
Watch the news. There's less and less people like us every day. The past districts that we were associated with have long since ended these practices of spot assessments, partially because of law enforcement. I mean, they either replaced the board members or the board was packed where, you know, it changed. I don't, I, I don't, I don't have any desire to pack this board and argue over property taxes like on this level. I don't think either do you guys.
Again, the, the board assessment and appeals, they, they are trying to do what they do, and they're representing county, township and school district with their decision. There's, we had a, we had a handful of appeals of residents, residential properties appealing their assessment this year. Deadline is September, the hearings are usually in September, October. For the most part, they were denied or, um, they were reduced slightly, but the one that was denied, they went and further appealed it again to the, to the next level. But, and they provided an appraisal and they spent some money with attorney and they did it. So whatever the board of appeals decides is, you know, it's, it's in fact. Whether I show up or Brian sends, uh, his, his representative from, from his office, which he tries to do, I say, no, we're good. We don't, we don't need representation in this area. Let the board of appeals do it. I mean, they're not, they're not significant. So, and then I'd rather the pain is for him to sit there and report back to me what, I'm gonna get a letter from the league saying what happened anyway. And then we should, we have, we can make a decision to appeal it after that, like that's never really happened, so.
So if that's the case, if a warehouse attempts to lower their assessment by 10 million dollars, we can still appeal?
After, yeah, after the resolution's made, yeah, certainly.
What's the point of this?
So then what is the point of this? Then what is the point of this if we still have options to appeal?
Well, this is setting the threshold, sorry, Tom.
No, I think what this is saying is if you don't have this resolution in the future, if this, if this, uh, court case stands, in the future, you won't have the ability to do that because you don't have a, you don't have a.
So we don't even know the outcome of this court case.
I don't, I think it's.
So let's, let's say, um.
But if you wait till after?
Yeah, well, you know, they rule on the court case and then we have to decide then the next meeting, hey, this is what we need to do, or no, we're gonna risk it. But till now, it's not helped us any.
So my understanding is that if, um, let's say Dollar General decides to challenge their assessment and, you know, we go after them and we have this resolution, we can fall back on and say, the purpose we, the reason why we decided to challenge this appeal is, is because of the 500,000 dollar threshold. That triggered it, we appealed it. If we don't have that threshold and we just arbitrarily go after, they have the right to come at, and that's what's generating this, this court case, is they're saying districts arbitrarily are just picking and choosing who to go after. So, you know, hey, Dollar General's a good neighbor, we're not gonna go after them, but, you know, Head Smart isn't, so we're gonna go after them. And that's where the.
Chris, my, your point, the farm property up the road, that is, if we're going after one, now we have to go after everybody, the farm property up the road that is just a mom and pop farm operation sells for?
A million, 442.
A million, 442, and is assessed a good old 120,000 dollars because it just has a house and an old bank bond that's dilapidated on it. We have to now go after them because we set that threshold there, and then if we don't go after them, we still open ourselves up for when Dollar General comes to us. They're gonna say, well, you didn't go after that property. So we're at the same.
But that would only be if they came to the appeals to lower the challenge. Just because it's sold doesn't mean it's all actually gonna go up.
Correct. But if somebody's on the flip side tried to come down, they're gonna say, well, you didn't go after them when theirs should have been up.
Change of an ag property going down though isn't.
It won't get reassessed until they.
It's not gonna get reassessed until you pull a permit and he said it or.
You know, commercial.
Right.
Correct.
So.
But your sale is the best assessment you ever had in that.
Yeah, but it's not gonna go up because of the sale.
I understand, but what I'm saying is, we know that value has gone up. So now the, the warehouse investors can say, well, you didn't go after that one, their, their taxes should have went up. Why didn't you appeal that? Why are you appealing ours? Cause, cause ours wanna come down. Did you follow what I'm saying?
Yeah. So i- if.
I don't know, that's just my opinion.
There seems to be a lot more questions than we have answers for or than we're comfortable with.
Put it on the agenda for next.
So we, we won't put it as a motion, we'll put it as a discussion item. I mean, we're, we're not, we've, the appeals process is over at this point, so, for the season, so, or we've gone through it and we're not looking to apply this, I guess I should say. So we have time, so it can, it can go on to discussion when Brian's here for the voting session, and then, you know, if we want to, since it's on the agenda as a discussion item, a motion could be made at the 15th, or it could be put on December, January, February, at any point that we're comfortable doing it. But it seems like we need more answers too.
Would we seek a second opinion from another law firm?
We could get our school districts, have us prepare what theirs was their saying.
That'd be, uh, do you guys work on that?
I'd just be curious what others are.
Because we, we're not the only school district in Burke's County that's having this influx of Amber's Valley. They're all having.
Yeah, we'll find out.
Moving on to personnel, Mr. Hallard.
Uh, the first thing is the following re- the following resignations, Joseph Kohler as a long-term substitute chemistry teacher. I guess we'll move on this tonight, cause it's.
Well, we, they don't want to.
Yeah, but it's already been done. Maybe we move on after it's been done. And a move that we approved, the following resignations, Joseph Kohler as a long-term chemistry teacher, effective 9/21/22. And Joanne Faust as a part-time lunch recessate at Penn Burnville Elementary for the purpose of retirement, effective October 28th.
Next, sir.
Any comments? All those in favor, give a consent, say an aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries.
B, a move that we approved, the following employment, Wendy Lefkow as a part-time cafeteria worker at Burke Bethel Elementary at Mallory at 1250, effective 11/2222.
Next, sir.
Any comments? Roll call?
Spiker.
Yes.
Chris Miller? Heck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Coffin?
Yes.
Clough?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
C is for the next meeting, is to approve the following mentor that's listed there. D is for the night, a move that we approved the following volunteers for the remainder of the 22, 23 school year as listed.
Next, sir.
Any comments?
Can we cross random ones out?
Yeah, I was gonna say that last one was a little sketchy to me.
Roll call?
He just had to look down at that.
Chris Miller?
Must be the last name on.
Heck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Coffin?
Yes.
Clough?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Spiker?
Yes.
Moving on to policy, Mr. Ed.
We're gonna give first reading with the intent to give second reading, final approval on December 6th, 2022, to the following policies that the school has listed.
Any comments on that?
Could you resend to the board 203?
Any comments?
I will, I'll, one thing I will say about 203, um, so in 203, there was a recommendation, and maybe you can correct me on the exact wording, um, so you'll know when you do that, the original language of that, this is immunizations of communicable diseases. It read that the board requires that guidance and other state and local health officials establish board policy. A lot of what they put was, um, guidance, so that if the state gave guidance, we would adhere to it. We went through and changed all guidance to lawful orders, um, so that in the event we got ourselves. So that in the event we got ourselves in a pickle where, you know, there was a mandate that was being challenged, we would not be subjected to guidance and order. So we kind of.
So lawful, you're saying if they would say it meets the law, you're saying that, that we would influence these vaccinations?
Right. Right, right. If it was the law. And then, you know, there was.
But a mandate is not a law, right?
My, that would be my interpretation of it.
Well, let's make that clear. Yeah, because that's a big difference.
You do or no?
I don't think a mandate's law.
No, I, yeah, I concur. But I agree, but we gotta, we gotta make sure the wording's. I mean, and why we changed it to lawful was exactly for the masking order.
Right.
Was to make sure that we weren't, like if the Secretary of Health came in and said, all ma- all vaccinations. So we did go through to kind of tweak it. You'll see there was a, we added to ensure that all students and staff members are not pressured to have non-state mandated vaccinations. And we can look at changing, maybe we look to change the mandate at work to all non-state lawful vaccinations or whatever. And there was reference to the health and safety plan. We added things like, by the board approved health and safety plan, or the board approved safety plan. So it's very clear that these are not things, that this stuff was, yeah, has come through to the board, if that makes sense. That's what I get about you. Thank you. It should be in your folder too on that.
I, I knew we spoke about it. Yeah. A handful of months ago, if I recall. What's that?
It's, it's harder.
Did you read it on there?
Yes, the way they're written now. It's not like the way they used to be.
There's a lot of, like, they're, they're putting a lot in administrative regulations. So what we've been trying to go back through is kind of take a look at what current policies are and what their recommendation and try to, like, where our policy, some of our policies that were very specific, we put our old language back in so it's not just open-ended with administrative regulations.
Any other comments on that? Who we going to correct?
Contemporary Literate Committee. And, um, shall I read the board's script?
Just say that's good.
Okay, as listed. There was some conversation with Mr. Albrecht and some of the curriculum committee about this chairman of course things. We wanted to make sure, especially regarding money. We want to make sure savings is addressed and credit card use, so use that kind of thing. And the script tells that this is covered also. I can't remember where. In personal finance, of course, but I feel like you can teach that enough. Because my point is, everybody's good at spending. Not many people are good at saving. And any even different teachers, while I'm at it, teachers have, you know, they have their perspectives and, um, I mean, I don't raise kids that, like, they're almost paying for their whole car because they learned how to save when they were fifteen. You know, versus like, ah, I'm twenty, I have a car now, you know, I can't run it today. So, um, that was one of our concerns. And then their course dynamics, this is a zero point five credit course. They require that all students can meet total progress graduation requirements, students have this course in September, fourth, fourth, three. And then we, um, do you want to take this?
Yeah, so I have, I have. I'm sorry, on the curriculum, can I just harp on that one? So I agree with what you both stated. You mentioned the personal finance class. But that's not a required course for graduation. So my newness here, what, what's the process to get a course like that as a requirement? Because when you sent the description of that course and what's all covered and entailed in it, I read it and I went, every kid who passes through these hallways should be required to take that class. Like, and pass it. Like, everything that you mentioned in there critical to being a successful adult. And I fail to, I guess, understand why that wouldn't be required.
The current kind of scope and sequence of math, and we looked at this a couple of years ago when we're looking at career pathways and trying to create avenues based on, on what high school life would look like for students. Whether they're going to trade school, going to the workforce, military, four-year college. Those who are looking at like university, four-year college level, they kind of follow it. Algebra one is, is a key stone course that every student has to take and pass. But then from there, they tend to go the track leading up to including calculus. But calculus is not applicable to the bulk of the career choices that our students go into. So to meet graduation requirements and earn the amount of math credit they need, that personal finance course is there and that's, that's a very applicable, like, practical, like, skills math course. So our students are going more into trades that calculus isn't gonna be applicable. Something like personal finance fits that bill and it's something that we can always say, stay taking with them beyond high school that's going to be useful for them instead of saying, take trigonometry, take, you know, pre-calculus. Uh, it's not required for everyone. We could obviously analyze that, but what that does within a four-year for a student who wants to go and do either like a math or science or health career field, that slows them down one year from, to getting to like those calculus, upper-level calculus courses because it would take a, a spot and it's one of the four math classes they have access to. So we, we could definitely analyze it, but when you look at different types of career pathways our students go to, those who are, who are, a lot of students do go through that course. It's just the ones, it's not a required course because it's not in a place of, you know, a student who might be going into engineering. And that wouldn't be, I'm not saying it's not applicable for them, but they're, they're looking to get more advanced math experience in those.
So I'm hearing his point is that they don't have so much time. There's so many slots filled for each of the schools. Thus, um, that's, that's why we kind of said what I said. So I was thinking, yes, I would like to see that class required, but could we just not expand this a little bit in this class that already is required for everybody and, you know, offer them a little more skills in the savings and the credit debt? Yes, in credit debt.
Right. Now, in the conversation with Andy today, and speaking with Jen, he talked the course. The last couple of years has been a lot more emphasis in resume building, preparation for interviews. In the next two days, everyone in that course is going through mock interviews. So they're, they're prepping for kind of career readiness in terms of getting a job so that they get that steady income. They are having conversation of, you know, some of the concepts in terms of saving and balancing, but it's not as in-depth. So there has been more emphasis on how you apply, how you get and attain the job. And then kind of some life stuff with it. But with that half-credit course and the, and the nature of it, you know, looking at trying to build everything in, that attainment of a job and those skills and these mock interviews that take place, you know, that's a big piece of the curriculum now where they might have had more time to, to drive or kind of get into the nuts and bolts of, you know, credit or savings that is covered in that personal finance course. So it's not something we can't look at.
Because everybody thinks that's what they're looking.
Yeah, that needs to be.
But the next few days, I know Andy and I and a lot of the admin team and even board members have already done it. Those mock interviews are a good experience for students. You put a math aside, they're comfortable.
Yeah, that's a, that's a skill they need just as much as, as.
Correct.
I agree with Chris. We gotta somehow tie that all together.
So they do, they do, and then when I talked to Jen, she said they do, they do touch on savings and credit cards, but not, not in depth, which is still. And kind of it was shift, the focus shift. I didn't, so I just pulled, we have about fifty kids, not about fifty, we have fifty kids that are taking that personal finance class now. So it's usually falls, the majority of them are in twelve, eleven, twelve, fourteen. So that has, when I first got here, we would run one section of maybe ten kids in personal finance. So that has grown over the last, there's three sections of it running, which is a positive, but it's, it's just, it's not a mandated course, but. Kelly Schreger.
I assume there's a description of it given to kids when they're going through their course selection. You know, I don't know if somebody's meeting with them, if that's pushed for the kids who aren't necessarily college-bound looking to take a.
I think it's a course for all kids, not even, I mean, the college-bound, they're dealing with that, that interest in loan right up front.
They probably need it more than the other, actually, but I get what, you know, there's only so much time.
But isn't there a way to incorporate that into every math class? And how many weeks does it take? How many class hours does it take to actually teach them the nuts and bolts of savings and credit card debt and all that? I don't think it has to be a year-long course, in my opinion.
I had an eighth-grade math teacher when I went through Tole Rockham who said, two weeks aside, so she told us at the beginning of the year, we were gonna work hard to get ahead. And she wanted to take two weeks to teach us things that weren't part of the standard curriculum. And checkbooks, compound interest, credit card-type stuff and how that interest works. Interest rates and points were all part of this little two weeks that she worked ahead. And honestly, the rest of my school days, that stuff was never discussed again. So.
And I think when, at some point, we had, this predates me, but we used to have time in consumer science at the junior high. I think Jen said that she had your kids in junior high and, and that's when they hit, they hit a lot more of that finance piece. I know personal finance, they do like, if you were to buy a car, personally, sing a car, you know, what's the, but we can look at, there may even be parts that are incorporated in the economics class. So let's go back and just do some research and see, are there things that we can do to restructure?
Yeah, just within her class, if she could flush that out a little bit more. And I, I'd really like to talk to her and I'd be willing to come in. I have some ideas that, you know. I was very disappointed when our first kid went to college and we were attacked by credit card companies. He was attacked and I'm like, he wants, he's a freshman going to college. Why would you offering a credit card? Well, because you can get him in debt for the rest of his life, you know? And I said to our oldest, you are not getting a credit card or get it. That's ridiculous. Well, why? Well, I can tell you what I could do to you, you know? And you're slated for the rest of your life. They don't think that way. They don't realize that a card is so easy. If you have cash in the envelope, you have to pull out. That really hurts. And, um, it's just some very simple principles that I've got to see her in, so. Thanks, Mr. Albrecht.
Yeah, absolutely. So we'll, we'll touch base on that too. I mean, the application, we might even be able to look at other places, so it's not necessarily her class. It's efficient, like, with all the things we want. So there might be different places we could look at that. Uh, the next two items are just discussion items for now. There are things that I, I'd like to kind of get some feedback on and ultimately look for board approval. The first one is dual enrollment, which is not new. So as the Act fifty-five changed the school code this summer, where schools starting July have to have a dual enrollment agreement with higher education organizations. We've always had that. So with our act program, we have an agreement through Delph about, so that's been long established. So we need the requirement in that stance. Uh, we also have dual enrollment with RAC. But rather than just looking at this and saying, maybe check that box, we went and looked at what opportunities we could provide to our students, that they could graduate from high school and have something. So years back, we had an agreement with Penn State Bursch where students could go on campus, take Penn State classes in the college setting. Penn State Bursch has stopped doing that for the last several years. We have looked at bringing college into high school. So we have RAC agreements with business courses, Mrs. Frost at one point, that's inconsistent. And then you have the added element of students going to college and now they're college in high school classroom, there's more college. Not every college is accepting that as college credit. So students take the class, they take the credit, it's not always transferable. So we were looking for different opportunities. I sat down with Albright a couple of weeks ago. They have a program like Penn State Bursch where our students through an agreement could go to Albright. They could work with high school admin and guidance staff to flex their schedule, maybe at the morning block, later in the afternoon. And they take college cour- courses on campus. So they have the opportunity to take upwards, we're choosing between forty-three different courses that they could take on campus. Because they're taking it on campus, it's a lot more likely that that's transferable credit to a university that they go to. It doesn't tie up our staff in terms of, kind of wait, have students wait until they have enough interest to run an advanced level course, which is also a kind of added benefit. When you look at the paperwork, I believe you shared it with you, there's a flyer from Albright, but then there's a sample of what a memorandum of understanding would be to them. Nearly all the MOU says is that we're gonna follow their guidelines, we're gonna communicate with them, who's gonna take the courses. We're gonna make sure that we're holding them accountable for doing their work. We'll get a midterm progress report and if they're not meeting expectations, they just expect that we get on top of them to make sure that they're meeting expectations. It would be five hundred dollars on the student to receive four credits at Albright. So when you look at.
Five hundred dollars for all four?
All four credits. So five hundred dollars per course, which is more than what RAC was when we had it in school. But again, we're looking at transferability and the way to go to campus. There's no transportation agreements or anything, so that would be on a student like at Penn State Bursch. But I would be looking at, I want to share this information with you, uh, looking at working towards getting an agreement with Albright so that we can get this in our course selection, look at an option for students in December. And then next year, when we start planning for twenty-three, twenty-four, we have more opportunities for students to excel beyond what we offer in our, in the school wall.
Who would be responsible for transportation? Students?
Students, sure.
And like if parents have PAPA accounts for their child's education, would that be able to be applied to it?
I'd have to look. So it seems in, in meeting with them, I mean, it's not a lot on us other than exposing our students' good, providing that opportunity. A lot of it falls on the parents and families if they want to pursue it.
That's a really good cost to get, obtain some credits ahead of, if you're able to.
Albright also does something similar to this. I'm meeting with them this week. You can have multiple agreements, but I know we have a high school student now who's taken an Albright course because they didn't have the opportunity to take the course that we offer. So I'm gonna hear what they have to say as well. So I'm gonna compare and contrast. We can hold multiple dual enrollment agreements. That's not hurting anything.
I mean, if Penn State Bursch ever gets back, it'd be good because it's close.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I know students could get into that with this, especially upper-level science courses that we can't. Like, we haven't been able to.
Is that all because of the COVID that they backed that down because they're doing more online versus in person?
Seem more clearance related and having all their staff with, at least is what, it's been kind of related to that. But not everyone having the same level of clearance as are required by public schools.
But they still have, Penn State still partners with the MHP program, which is the medical health professionals of ECTs. So they still have that option, but they've moved away from.
Which we have several students, several students that have done that option.
So do you have any questions related to that, if they think of, please let me know, I'll have to answer. But this one's pretty straightforward. It's just.
This is gonna be on the next, again.
As long as everyone's comfortable with it.
I have an idea.
Because I don't get the paperwork out and I'll work with Mr. Hammer to get this in the high school catalog.
Yeah, ready to.
Absolutely.
I would be a proponent of the Albright one as well. Just more options. Any, any of us.
Absolutely. And I need with the third, I need with Albright at third. So I mean, if we have students who look into state local and go to college there, that's a head start. That's a guaranteed exception. So I figure. Absolutely, and I need with the third, I need with Albright at third, so I mean, if we have students who look into state local and go to college there, that's a head start, that's a guaranteed exception for us, so I figure.
That's gonna be our other program.
I think that's. The SRI?
Yes, so Albright does SRI.
Okay.
Attached with their dual enrollment, they also have credit, students can earn towards the SRI portion, and it's heavily discounted as well. Those are conversations I wanna have at a bigger level, because that's gonna be a big shift in how we've done science and institute research. Um, I know Wiser has had a lot of success with that, especially in the ag area and implementing research, uh, so that's gonna be one of those things that I don't wanna bring in and then try to build everyone's capacity to make that happen. But with the new next gen science standards and a shift in kind of how we're looking at teaching science in a more of a modeling inquiry-based way, that might be a natural next step. Uh, but I wanna build, I wanna build some understanding on what that looks like at a teacher level, but that is, I'd glad to mention that, that is a piece that we could build into.
And the flyer does, if you'll see it, does kind of talk a little bit about the SRI from the, the research institute too.
And the other item I wanted to bring up for discussion, um, and potential approval at the next meeting, Dr. Matlak had brought this to our attention at the beginning of the year through partnership that he's had with Cocteau. Cocteau University has a program where they take undergraduate students who are just getting ready to graduate as K six educators, they get their certificate, but they sign onto a contract to jump right into a master's of education degree, where they pick up a reading specialist certificate, which is incredibly difficult to find anymore like some of these other niche areas. So this is really kind of a unique opportunity for dual benefit on both the district scent and then the student, the university graduate student scent. So the way this works is the students commit to this program where districts would put in money towards their master's degree. And in lieu of that, they essentially become one of your teachers three days a week for the entire school year, where their sole purpose is to help support the reading intervention needs, uh, and literacy needs of students that are in the district.
What else, do you pay for that tuition?
That's it.
No mileage, no?
No, so it's fifteen thousand five hundred per student, that money goes to pay some of the thirty-six graduate credits they need.
Are they getting paid by the university then?
Their credit is their, is their payment, um, so they take, they take advantage of the internship of, by being able to work with our students while earning their degree. Uh, we get them three days a week, the expectation is that two out of those three days, they're working with students on interventions, um, assessing, supporting, teaching small groups, supporting the reading needs of students. They give you the opportunity that you can use them one day a week as a, as a flex substitute if needed, ideally, there's plenty of literacy need and support for students, so we wanna capitalize on that. But it's a tremendous opportunity that not only does that benefit them as growing educators and us as a district, we get to interview candidates, right now they have around forty-six candidates that are interested. Dr. Matlak has a name with Cocteau, um, so each candidate has been told, like, if we wanna go with this, he gets first choice. But this is also a great way to cherry pick quality educators, so.
It gives you a right, I mean, if there was somebody that you gotta link up and hire.
Yep, this is a year-long interview, right? So this is, this is a, a really good way for us to know who is involved. Uh, my recommendation would be to bring on two students, one for Bethel, one for PB, we can use, uh, Esrs two money next year to fund that, for the, essentially for looking at starting laws, uh, and reading needs of students. But again, three days a week from August to June, we also get them for a full week in June to run summer enrichment that could be tied to ESY, uh, and special ed to support intensive needs of students.
Is there a need in the junior high for that?
So our thought right now would be, the focus is really on elementary, if we do this next year with Bethel and PB, and there's a capacity and we see how this, this functions, I think we could plan for a better implementation and use of the junior high level. But I'd like to start at that elementary level, and that's where the certification of these teachers are, are case studies.
Well, this is a K through six, that's what they're certified in, K through six.
When they graduate from their undergrad, yes, but their reading specialist goal would extend, so they could be utilized in a junior senior high school capacity. The other nice piece is, other school districts have gotten these interns signed up with STS as well, and they get them to work the two days a week that they're not under this, and we pay sub- break, and we can either have an intervention this five days a week, or they're building stuff through those kids and build relationships. So I think there's a lot of opportunity here, and the cost that comes from us, you know, goes to benefit their college credit and, uh, getting, so I, I do think it's a good way to make.
I would bring that's minimal for what you would get, uh, which are good.
Underestimating. So again, a lot of information there, new idea, new initiative, um, if there were any questions, I'm happy to answer them and, and field them, but otherwise, I would love to see this with the dual enrollment, be something that we could pursue next, we, or on the next board meeting for approval. And I'll work on an MOU with Cocteau to bring to you, they said MOUs would come out in January, but that interviews of potential candidates would start happening, and it's.
Something good.
And Esrs two.
All right, moving on, our items for nap, actually, to parallel this.
Be resolved of the school directors of the top of the area school district hereby approved the discipline described in the admissions of fact waiver appearing without compliance with the huge safeguards and consent to expulsion concerning number twenty-two dash zero-two and ratify the execution of the same by Dr. Mettick, Mettick's superintendent of schools.
That's it.
We can, we, we executed it in, to keep the, we have about a thirty-day window when expulsion comes, we did informants that the student didn't miss education since they were in agreement, so we can either do it tonight or we can wait till.
Any comments, roll call?
Heck.
Yes.
Bats.
Yes.
Coffin.
Yes.
Claw.
Yes.
Palmer.
Yes.
Boss.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Chris Miller.
Yes.
All right, we're gonna move into administrative reports, we're gonna just go down through as listed there, Dr. Matlak.
Excuse my lack of lights in the booth, so I am nearly finished with my one-on-one meetings, I had, I got all K six done, about halfway through the junior senior high, and what I'll say is, my biggest takeaway at this point is just the willingness of staff to engage in any kind of collaboration to make a better experience for our students, that's what's a big cause. So I'm really excited to work with everybody and, uh, who's are going?
Um, so first, I would like to thank Mr. Schrack, put on a nice performance for us yesterday at Bethel Elementary, um, with his select spooky band, uh, Dr. Mettick was there, they did a very nice job. Also like to highlight a new hire, Kaylee Clauser, who is our new music teacher at Bethel, um, she has already recruited nine new chorus members in her two weeks with us, um, and that's something that Diana down at Pen Burnville wanted to see happen at Bethel, an increase in that fourth grade chorus. Um, and I wanted to thank everyone for the continued support for the Ritter family, um, Mrs. Ritter has been oh-so thankful for the district's outpour of support for her.
So just to recap, we had a really busy October, um, at Fire Prevention Week, we had Burnville Community Fire Company come out, and, uh, they were able to do a fire prevention lesson for our kindergarteners, um, and our kindergarteners got to look at the truck and everything, so that was great. Uh, PTO helped me, and thanks to our PTO, um, and approximately eighteen of our staff were present for pie with the principal, um, so we hosted that at the, in the middle of October, where we had about twenty, twenty-five families come, uh, to do some meet and greet with me, um, and socializing with families, and enjoyed the pie that was donated or supported from Wayhar, Heidelberg Family Restaurant, Wyomissing Family Restaurant, uh, and we got other donations from Voyeurs and the restaurant stores, so that was a really great, great event. We, um, also wanna thank Mr. Schrack for having the spooky band, uh, perform at Pen Burnville on Friday, that was a really, really nice experience, and thanks to, um, Matt for helping to livestream it for families on Facebook. We also had Mrs. Talibin have our select chorus perform as well, so, yeah.
Good evening, everyone, uh, the FFA returned from the national convention, and they were certainly not empty-handed, uh, our team landed in the silver category, uh, that is probably the best in history, topey history for our Act of Ed program, so fantastic. Within that group, we actually have two gold individuals and two bronze individuals, so I wanna make sure that they are highlighted, that was Ethan Byler, Adam Mays, Maddie Morris, and Keela Edrosol, so that is fantastic news for our FFA department. Uh, speaking of FFA, they have a citrus sale from November first to the eighteenth, a huge shout-out to our senior county chorus, Emily Dowery, Dalton Spencer, Ben Bowers, and Aiden Guerina, and part of that group, a special shout-out to Aiden Guerina, who actually made the district chorus, so some great highlights, great things going on at the junior senior high.
Hi, everyone, uh, Topal, Mr. Hammer, uh, down at the junior high, last Friday, the, uh, junior high student council put on the Halloween dance, uh, the kids all, most of them all dressed up, they came and had a really great time. Speaking of student council, uh, during the month of October, they collected, um, I think around six giant rubber made tubs and boxes worth of non-perishable goods. Mrs. Pam Riddle came with her car on one of our in-service days, and Mr. Hammer and I helped chance load those up, uh, all of those non-perishable goods went to the Opportunity Housing Credit. Um, speaking of food drives, they are also, uh, ramping up to starting another food drive for the Tadukin, uh, food drive, starting next Monday, I believe the seventh, and that will extend through Wednesday, November twenty-third, uh, where all the junior high students will be invited to stay after school on that half-day, uh, to participate in some fun activities and games. Uh, last but not least, with the pride points that we give out at the junior senior high, uh, shout-out to Katie Vats and Anaya Gray, who were the two highest-earning pride point students for the month of October, each earning seven.
Big week in athletics at Topahocken, um, the boys cross-country placed second in districts, uh, the entire team qualifies for states this Saturday in Hershey, uh, we did have two girls qualify, uh, for states, fellow Wright, Vanessa Van Tigglent. Uh, the boys soccer team, county champs, uh, looking for district gold tomorrow night down in, uh, Cumberland Valley, uh, versus, um, Calvary, uh, great job for Coach Brown, who I don't know if you noticed, but he was named, uh, first county coach of the year. Uh, this year's fall play is Clue, that's on the eighteenth and nineteenth of November, and next Friday, we have the Veterans Day Assembly and Breakfast, uh, Friday, November eleventh, breakfast starts at eight-thirty, and you're invited.
Good evening, uh, a few weeks ago, Kirsten Eders and I, we met with they represented from the Berks Community Health Center about their Wellness on Fields program, um, essentially what it is, it's a mobile coach bus that has two medical exam rooms and one dental room, um, they go out to different areas in the community, uh, to provide services to families and our students. Uh, we toured each of the three buildings, looked at the locations, um, we identified as the junior senior high school as the best location, um, it is free for us to host up, the only thing we have provided is a restroom, um, so we felt we could field house, so we don't have, uh, people coming in out of the school buildings. Working with them, I'm waiting for the MOU, once I get that, have the, the dates solidified, uh, I'll have that for your approval. Uh, earlier tonight, actually, Kate Wood and I had our second community training on special education, uh, we did have a few parents show up, uh, so it's great to have that involvement, um, so what we are excited about, we had two seniors attend, uh, that are interested in, in pursuing a career in special education. Uh, one of those students I really wanted to recognize is Isabel Gonzalez, uh, Isabel had her challenges last year with her attendance and participation in school, uh, I don't know that she's missed one, like, two days this year, uh, she's really come in and done a great job, uh, she's part of our work-based learning program, she's working down in our special ed rooms at our elementary schools, uh, but just really doing a great job, so it was, you know, a fun night for Caitlin and I, to be able to sit down and talk with those individuals and really, you know, help them look at their careers in special education in the future.
So at the last board meeting, I had mentioned that we were in the process of transitioning three of our off-campus students back, two of them are fully transitioned back, and one is in the process, slowly transitioning back to district, so that was, um, pretty exciting meetings that I got to be part of, to see those kids come back to our district, and very excited to do so. The other thing I've been working on a lot this past month is being part of the autism initiative, so we've had Patton coming into Bethel Elementary into our autism support classroom and really just supporting our staff, it's been really neat watching her jump in and train staff, and work with kids, and that, just kind of like that fresh eye in the classroom to see. One of the things that we talked about is getting some of our loans in the classrooms, that you kind of can get stuck when you work with one student for so many years, that it's just really exciting to have that fresh eye in there and just see those things that, and give you that advice. And one thing that she had shared, she was just really impressed with Bethel all around, she said every staff member was so kindly friendly, and she couldn't talk highly enough about how receptive everybody was to her support in there, and I just wanna point out, Mr. Bear, Mr. Dallas Bear, we got to go into one of his gym classes to deliver and observe one of the students in the AS classroom, and she, as well as myself, were very impressed with how well that student was included in the classroom, he was unsupported, and Mr. Bear was just making those accommodations for him throughout the whole class, it was just really neat to see.
Hey, hi, everybody, um, there's lots going on in the cafeteria as usual, um, top of my list, very exciting, at both Pen Burnville and Bethel, we started a chair table or a chair cart in the cafeteria, um, so essentially, that's just a place where students can put prepackaged, unopened items from the cafeteria or whole fruit, uh, to be shared with other students. So, um, it's going great so far, principal's been a great help, Lindsay, I guess, had it at her other districts, so she and I have been kind of meeting lines to, to tweet things with that. Uh, this afternoon, I was notified by the School Nutrition Association of Pennsylvania that we were selected as the October tray of the month, so what that means is I submitted a picture of lunch tray from the junior senior high, um, and then we received the most comments or, and/or shares and likes on their Facebook page, so it's exciting. Uh, this Thursday, we have the annual Thanksgiving Day Meal in all the cafeterias, and, um, a lot of the administrators are gonna lend a hand and help serve the meals to the students. Breakfast program continues to grow, we served four hundred seventy-one students breakfast this morning, which is about thirty-six percent of the students, so I'm really proud about that. And finally, I just wanna mention, we had our, I guess, the annual, I think it's the third year where we've done an apple crunch day last week, so that's just a day that we kind of highlight apples as a local, you know, produce item, brought in local apples, cut them up, drizzled them with some caramel, served apple sauce, served apple, um, crisp, and see if they're good.
Mr. Schrack.
Evening, everybody, um, going with spooky concerts, um, Matt and Mr. Schrack had contacted me a little bit ago just to add some ball and effects to the spooky concert, so I said, I'll bring some lights down, make a fun for the kids, do some net fun, um, it was neat to see, it was a very good concert. Uh, Mrs. Vats, I mentioned the streaming, I've never been more nervous about a stream ever, I'm used to a big computer, lots of cameras and screen, all I have is my tiny little phone and Facebook, I screwed up the first one, I will fully admit, I've got it, got it right the second time. Um, and then I just wanted to give a shout-out to, um, Kyle and Zach, Kyle, um, came up with an initiative after we had the power outage at Pen Burnville and had some kids home, um, how we could utilize our generator and run some more equipment off of that, so with his help, and Zach and I helped to pull some electric lines, um, so now all our network closets are on the generator, all our game batteries are in the generator, so we should go run those smart functionality tools, I just wanted to give a shout-out to that. Uh, real quick, job, you did a real, real nice job for us, so, thank you, everyone.
So does anybody have any hopelessness to discuss?
Yeah, we have a meeting that you talked about, Mr. Mettick, you're talking about attending to the, uh, one eighty-three and called Core Purple Erosion, anything to add to that?
It is on the night, so it's coming out, yeah. Um, I think I have, I've learned a lot about erosion and control, I think I have the.
I think I have. I've learned a lot about erosion and the set of control. I think I have the application. Had a pretty good rough draft. And then the guy I reached out to, the representative, said, when I had things for the most part set up, I could reach out and he would walk me through kind of where I needed to change and improve. So we're moving forward on it.
Was there more buses parked here tonight than normal or is that why?
The smaller ones change from time to time. Sometimes there's.
A lot, it's a lot fuller than I thought it was.
There's a lot of people here.
Yeah, I think it was more, yeah, I think it was more.
I wanted to ask Mr. Hammer, Mr. Hammer.
Yes, sir.
When you were, when we were at Bethel after, you presented the language arts and the math. How's that working?
NTSI's? Yes. We actually had our first NTSI quarter report. So far, things are going well. We have hit one of our targets. Our systems are in place, so now we're at the point of evaluating getting the systems even better. But overall, we're doing a really nice job.
Are you able to identify where the needs are?
Yeah, we've actually set up an entire early warning system. So this early warning system actually looks at every single student, their academics, their discipline, their attendance, not only current data, but their historical data, all the way, all the metrics we have from since they were in kindergarten, and ranks them based off of high, moderate, low, and no risk. We then take those students and place them into our categories according to their risk level. So we have, we have a system that we are meeting with our NTSI's team, our PBIS team, addressing behavioral needs and academic needs for every single one of our kids.
As I said earlier, are we starting to see a little?
Right now. You know, relatively transparent, we are seeing a little bit increase in discipline, but it's not necessarily the high-level, sustainable discipline. It's more of the getting your, some of your mature legs underneath you type of discipline. So I do expect those numbers to rattle off and level off eventually, but right now, we are still kind of going through all our systems, evaluating, making sure that we're doing the best we can.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hey, new business. Phillies are up four nothing. I'm sure Matt's over there watching it.
Chris didn't want to know the score.
Ruined for me.
Maybe he's been streaming it the whole time.
Calendar events are listed there, and you know, Mike spoke about the introductory role, or somebody did. Always exciting time. It's hardly that timely here. Thanksgiving break is listed on our calendar. Let's do it. Does anybody from that public have anything to comment? Seeing none, I'm going to look for a motion to appear. We do have executive session.
Thanks for the personnel reasons.
I'll appear if it's up to say no.